Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. At this time, we'd like to call at order the Monday, September 12, 2016 Board of Education Meeting for Guthrie Public Schools. We have a roll call, please.
Pennington.
Here.
Smedley.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Salee.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Watts. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Yes. Okay, so let's see if everyone can join in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation for certified and support employees of the month.
Strobel. Well, we have a first tonight. One of the nominations came in from a staff that was going to be out of town, so she actually filmed and wanted to present, so we will do that when we last, but Dee will help me get that set up. But because of a new school year, I want to tell everybody that kind of the process we go through, we have a committee that receives the votes, and then they rank those and send them to me. And so the committee this year is Candy Webb and Charity McPee to represent the support, and then the certified is Kim Hinkle and Kylie Wooderson. And so, anyway, I appreciate them, because it takes a while to read through these and then rank those. So first, we would like to start with our support employee of the month, which will get a $25 gift card and a plaque, and Maggie Waite from the high school, and Moses, would you guys come up?
Can I take a picture for you?
We'll take a picture, second.
Okay. Moses and I have been at our school together for a long time, and I just feel like he is one of those core group of people that would our school continue without him? Yes, but would we want him to? Absolutely not. He's hardworking, dedicated, and this man goes above and beyond. And I think Chris would agree with me. We all kind of listen when he's called on Milwaukee Talking, because we're waiting, and anytime they say, "Moses, come to the cafeteria." "Moses, go in locker room." We're all waiting, and we hear, "On my way." That tells me my award is simply, we know exactly what he's gonna say. Thank you, Moses.
And Mr. Legrand will come up and help with this next one for our certified employee of the month. Dr. Simpson gives me a hard time, says I can't keep a secret. I did a very good job this time, and so Jessica is gone, but she's going to present. And Ms. Walters, will you please come up?
Hi, guys. As a mom of four kids, I've been hoping for years that the district would centralize elementary enrollment. Carmen Walters took on this project, and she executed it tremendously. She was present before, during, and after to make sure everyone knew exactly what they needed to be doing. And what really touched me about the whole thing is that she personally thanked each person that helped with enrollment. Carmen went from table to table and made sure everyone knew that they were valued and that she appreciated them. She also called afterward to follow up and see what we could do better next year, and I admire that so much about her. When people are willing to listen, they construct their criticism. They don't just care about themselves, they care about everybody in the district and what's best for the parents, and I'm really proud and bad about Carmen. In addition to that massive project, Carmen has been building for Marsha Oldhaman in her really difficult absence. And I've spoken with her several times regarding the different situations, and every time she's calm and collected, and I think that's so awesome, not in a time that must be so stressful for her. She just keeps her cool and, you know, keeps those heels on and just keeps working through. So between covering her own desk and covering someone else's, she maintains a can-do attitude, and it's not just, "I can do it," it's we can all do it together. And I love that about her, and she's very deserving of this month's award. And so, congrats, Carmen, and I can't wait to see you when I get back from my mission trip. Congrats.
Hey, Moses, you and Maggie, get up for it. Take a picture, Chris, you got that one, got it?
Congratulations and thank you for our employees. At this time, do we have comments to the board by registered citizens?
We have none.
Comments to board by board members? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay. This is gonna be fairly brief, but it's good news. I would say that in my five years that I've been in this district, this is absolutely the smoothest star we've had. Part of that I attribute to a lot of work that our transportation department did prior to the beginning of school to make it very smooth, and I want to applaud them. Cody Thompson is holding their feet to the fire, but also, he's holding a lid on all that, because as we all know, transportation in this district is very challenging, and that was his first opening of school. And so, we did a remarkable job there. We had kids where we were supposed to be, and for the most part, on time, and things have gone very smooth since those first few days as well. Football team's off to a good start. They have a 2-0 record with an unable-to-finish game Friday night in Ponca City. I'm not sure if we're gonna count that as a loss or just as a non-played game. I think we'll just call it 2-0, as far as I'm concerned, and move on. We go to Carl Albert on the 23rd, so we're off this week, and then we go down and play the Titans. Our student count is very similar to the numbers that we ended 2015-16 with, and how that will look when midterm adjustments come out and for funding purposes is yet to be seen, but because I still, I've said that there may be a chance that there are fewer students in the state this year because of the economic crisis that we've encountered. And it's too early to tell on that. We'll know some better information after the October 1 child council and statewide, which will take a while to tabulate. The other thing that I wanted to give you an update on, the State Department of Education will receive an additional $40.2 million in additional funding from the discovery that cuts last spring were too deep by the Office of State Finance. And how those will be distributed by the State Department of Ed is yet to be determined. I've been told that much of the money will go into the funding formula rather than back to the line items from the activities fund where they were cut. And the areas that were cut, alt-ed, alternative education, textbooks, professional development, there were a lot of cuts in those line items. And the kind of what I'm hearing right now is that they will put that into the funding formula, which when they do that, there will be districts that are winners and losers in that with the amount of money that, since we are right around 65% state aid, we would probably be a winner in that in the sense that we will get some money back. But they've also said that they're going to put some money into some of those line items, and so we really don't know yet what that's gonna look like. We expect to hear something from the State Department, hopefully, pretty soon. It's, you know, the governor kicked around a special session to talk about how they were gonna use that money and decided against it, of course, and so now with the $140 million, 40.2 of which goes back in education, we're gonna have to, it will be up to the State Department to determine how that money is allocated. But Dennis and I have both, we've played around with the potential of it, and there's a lot of different things that can happen, so there's still a lot of variables out there. So the ultimate bottom line to that is, the crazy school finance of what was 2015-16 school year continues to be crazy and still unknown, and we're still feeling those effects. And that's my report.
Agenda item number nine, the presentation on ACT High School and College Success Report for 2015-2016 by Mr. Ogle.
Let these warm up. One thing I will say is, this is the 2016 class ACT report. It's not the whole school, it's the graduating class of last year. No matter when they took the test, it's the last test that they took is what they count on this report. And so if they only took it as a sophomore, that's the only report. If they took it five times, they're gonna take that fifth time and report for this ACT report. All right, to start off, our five-year trend of how many students we've tested, as you look there, 2012, we were 106. Last year, we talked about, you know, we were gradually increasing those and trying to get more students to take. We ACT state stepped in and are funding alt juniors that are present that day when they test, and they will pay for that one ACT. And so, next year, I know that we tested over 168 students that were juniors this year free of charge at the school, and so next year, you're gonna see that number even increase more, but we did go up a little bit from last year, and students tested from 137 to 145. Our English five-year trend, as you can see, we go back to 2012, we've been kind of fighting, trying to get right up to the state average. The blue is the district, and then the red, there's the state average. We were climbing, we were catching. Last year, I talked a little bit about, we were kind of unique. As the state average was going down, we were going up. And so our graduating class in 2015 was almost right there at the state average, and then last year's seniors, we dropped a little bit. Still real close, we're less than a point away, but we're still trying. We're not happy with those. We wanted to be at least state average or higher. Some classes, you know, do a little bit better on the ACT, and so, anyway, that's the English five-year trend. The math, once again, if you start looking, you can see that the trend is downward for the state average. Last year, in 2015, we climbed above that average. In 2016, we dropped. And so we are a full percentage point away from the state average in math last year. Reading, once again, we talked about it, you know, we were kind of dropping as the state average, we were climbing. And we went from 2014, 2015, we were climbing, trying to reach that. Last year's group, a little bit lower again, still, you know, less than a point away from the state average, and so at 20.6, close, just not there. And so I know Mr. Legrand has a slide here in a minute. He'll kind of talk about some things we're going to do to try to get to the state average or above, what we want to be. Science, looking there again, state average was going down. Over the last three years, we kind of hit a, where we were kind of going up, and that was the one that we talked about, our biology scores are really low with the EOI, but our ACT, we're right at state average, which doesn't compare very good. But last year, 2016, we did drop a little bit from where we were at the previous year. You know, still, once again, we're close to that state average, but we want to be at or above it. Then the composite of all of them together, you can see that kind of the same trend, state's going down. I think we talked about that, is there's more students taking the tests now, and so that's bringing the scores down, but we did hit one percentage point from last year. And so, one of the things I presented at the curriculum committee was, we compared and called to ask some different schools with our same demographics what their scores were. They didn't want to talk about that on camera, if you'd like to see those. They're still presenting theirs, and it's not like they care what they are, but people with our same demographics, scores were comparable. And so, I know the curriculum committee, they can talk to it a little bit, and if you guys have any questions about that, or if you want to catch me off, you know, when we're done, we can talk a little bit about those. But, you know, we were comparable. We wanted to see where we were at with some of the schools that are our same size and same demographics to see where we were. Are we way off, you know, because we did drop, but so did they. And so, that was one thing. I'm asking Mr. Legrand to come up here a little bit and go over this last slide that I have on here, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, one thing that I'm really pleased with is the fact that we've really made a conscientious effort to increase the rigor of our curriculum. And, you know, we all know that to be college career-ready, you need to be able to take courses that prepare you for those particular classes and to be successful in college. And since we, this will actually be the first year that we will have had a graduating class under the New Val South policy, and according to our New Val South policy, you have to take at least one AP or advanced class, and advanced class is considered a concurrent enrollment course, which you get college credit for, from each of the four or four subject areas in order to be considered a valedictorian. And this slide right here is a testament to the fact that we have more students taking more AP classes and concurrent classes than we've ever had. If you compare last year to this year, and you can see minor plus or minus there on the right, the red means we have a few less, but you look at our AP English 4 class, we actually have eight more students in AP English 4 this year. AP Biology, we've gone from four to 11, so that's an increase of seven. AP Environmental Science, we've increased from three last year, we have 47 this year. Part of that is because we've actually allowed freshmen to take AP Environmental Science, and we have a big enrollment there, which is very encouraging to me. And then AP History, we're the same number. AP Government, we're up four. AP Calculus, we're down two. But if you look at concurrent enrollment from last year to this year, we actually have nine more students that are concurrently enrolled in college classes. And so, part of that reason that calculus number's not that high is because a lot of those students will take college algebra concurrently. And so, if you look at the net gain from '16 to '17, you can see overall, we're up 64, which I think's a very positive sign, and I've always been a big believer, you get out of an education what you put into it. And if you prepare yourself by taking these higher-level classes, and AP classes and concurrent classes, then obviously, you're gonna be more prepared to do well and be successful in college. And so, I think what we're doing is, obviously, the data supports that, and, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight, you're not gonna see a big jump from one year to the next, but yet, as we increase our AP and concurrent enrollment, I expect to definitely see improvements on our ACT scores, because obviously, that's, the ACT is a reflection of how prepared you are for college, and in this case, more concurrent classes and AP classes, more prepared the students should be, which in fact should, and you should begin to see increases in our ACT scores over the next several years. But I'm really pleased with this, and that was the intent of changing our policy, is to get more students prepared by taking regular courses than just worrying about a grade that they're making in class. Hopefully, this will lead to some improved or marked improvement on our ACT scores in the upcoming years.
One of the things, Mr. Ogle, compared that data from the peer districts, everything was trending, the way we trended was the same way they were trending, and I wanted to see if we were an outlier or if that was a common thread. We want this to be better. We want improvement from this. One of the things that I cautioned the board and everyone two years ago about was, as we work toward getting more kids to take the test, one of the hazards could be lower scores, because we are trying to capture more students that will take that test. Now, we are in a situation where with the State Department paying for more testing, we're gonna have more juniors taking this test, but remember also that this was a snapshot, that is a fairly limited snapshot of our students, and does not have the data of all our ACT scores from all of our students as they prepare because of the juniors. This is just the seniors, remember, and Doug might reemphasize that.
Yeah, it's just the class of 2016 seniors that graduated.
Yeah.
Like you said, the most recent score. So sometimes they'll take it four or five times, and their fifth time, not necessarily their best score. And sometimes it is, sometimes it's not, so you're gonna get an average there, it might be a little deviant from what they actually scored their best score was, but it's pretty close.
Any questions for Mr. Legrand, or I?
Thank you very much. Agenda item number 10, the consent agenda. All of the following items, those of a routine nature, normally approved by board meetings, will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of the following items. You have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, but the four items, items 10A.
Second. Okay. We call for a local.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 10A, the minutes for regular meeting for August 8.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Stay.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five I's and one extension.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action upon the Gifted and Talented Committee for 2016-2017 school year.
This is on page 61 of your board packet. This item and the next item on these two committees require board ratification on an annual basis, and it was reviewed by the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Woodruff is here to answer any questions you might have.
I make a motion that we approve the Gifted and Talented Committee for 2016-17.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11B, the recommendation, consideration, and action upon Professional Development Committee for the 2016-2017 school year.
This recommendation is on page 62 of your packet. Ms. Walters is present to answer any questions you might have.
I move we approve the Professional Development Committee for 2016-17.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11C, recommendation, consideration, and action upon the contract with Stacy Group for Architectural Services for 2016-2017.
Page 63 through 72, your packet contains the contract, and the only changes that were noted was the dates on this. It requires annual approval. It's, they're already under contract for the projects that we have, but if we identify any additional projects that the board wants to review or go forward with, we already have a contract in place for them to keep up. That's why we ratify this annually.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with the Stacy Group for Architectural Services for 2016-17.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11D, recommendation, consideration, and action upon the memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and Guthrie Public Schools for supplementing funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for eighth-grade students for 2016 and 2017.
This is an annual item that we bring to the board for ratification, and there is a grant involved with this, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Ogle, is that $50,000?
Yeah, $35,000.
Okay. And it's, it requires annual ratification by our board, and it's already been approved by the Meridian Technology Center.
I move we approve the memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and the Guthrie Public Schools for supplemental funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for eighth-grade students for 2016-17.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11E, recommendation, consideration, and action to approve Ms. Carmen Walters as the authorized official for Guthrie Public Schools to sign any federal claims for reimbursement from the State Department of Education.
This is, items E and F were both, we believe this is a new requirement, we're not sure about this, but it requires board approval so that she can sign off on the federal claims as our representative, and then the same thing for special education projects for item F. Recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve Carmen Walters as the authorized official for GPS to sign any federal claims for reimbursement from the State Department of Education.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11F, recommendation, consideration, and action to approve Ms. Eldana Woodruff as the authorized official for GPS to sign any special education reimbursement claim from the State Department of Education for projects 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642.
Again, this is apparently a new requirement, but requires more approval. Recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve Ms. Eldana Woodruff as the authorized official for GPS to sign any special education reimbursement claims from the State Department of Education for projects 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Agenda item 11G, recommendation, consideration, and action upon 2016-2017 estimate of needs as prepared by Putnam &amp; Company, PLLC, and 2015-2016 financial statement and authority to publish the same.
Mr. Schultz.
There's a summary page for this huge entire document, page document on page 77, and it pretty much takes everything that's in that document, boils it down to one page, so if we can look at that page and start with the general fund, it's just a comparison of the current year and prior year as to what our total appropriation is for this year. Because of the reduced fund balance and the reduced estimate of miscellaneous revenue for this year that we're in, as compared to last year, our total appropriation was calculated by the auditor for law so good. It's very like, I mean, these numbers are gonna be pretty close to, hopefully, actual collections, and we know what the revenue picture is in the state, so it's just logical that we won't have as much money to spend. This document is not our operating budget, it just sets our legal spending limits, our total spending. That's why it's done independently by an auditor rather than, say, me doing this by myself. It keeps some independence there so that I can't do anything I wanted to do to bump that budget up, the legal spending limit. The building fund is next, and the carryover there, increased by $74,000. The building fund is next, and to carry over there, increased by $74,000, because the property valuation's increased, our ad valorem estimate of ad valorem revenue for next year is also up, so our total appropriation in the building fund is up by $106,000.
So we're, this will come into play here in a few minutes. We're down estimated by a million dollars, right?
Yes, it's the estimations, when you look at miscellaneous revenue, there are three things, miscellaneous revenue, ad valorem revenue, and our fund balance. The fund balance portion, no, is not an estimate. We know what our fund balance was to start the year, and it was down $750,000. Those miscellaneous revenues that are estimated to be collected next year are down by $520,000, but our ad valorem tax collections are estimated to be up because property valuation's went up. So if we collect at our normal 96% collection rate, which is, we usually have about a 4% tax collection delinquency each year, then that's what that should generate. So, yes, the net effect of all of that is a million dollars less that would be available to spend, and that's providing we don't have a revenue shortfall after, you know, a little later in the fall or in the spring, which I think everybody feels is entirely possible Child nutrition fund is basically just an operational fund, it really doesn't do anything but sustain itself. It's a little bit different in the way it's presented, because it takes into account in the prior year a supplemental appropriation that we did late in the year, because we always overcollect what's estimated. That estimate that the auditor has to make is fairly conservative. For us to have enough cash through the year by the end to finish up, we have to have them come back in, or I can do it, and the supplemental appropriation, have the county approve that for whatever we collect in excess of the original estimate. So at the end of the year last year, we did that, and so it looks like that our total budget is down $72,000. But at the end of this year, we'll do that same thing. We'll bring into the budget everything that we overcollect, and it'll just kind of even itself out by the end of the year. But we run pretty close, so it usually takes everything we collect that we have to spend to break even, that's why that's necessary. And every June, you probably remember, you do a supplemental appropriation for the child nutrition fund. The next fund on there is the school age care fund, and there was no activity whatsoever since we turned our school age care program over to YNCA, so that fund had no activity in it. And then the final fund is the sinking fund, and this is the first year in several years we've had a tax levy in the sinking fund because of our new bond issue. And our total millage will be 14.93 mils, which gets us below our target a little bit. We promised to hold the millage at 15 to 15 and a half mils or below, and we've had enough ad valorem growth that we've kind of exceeded that a little bit, so the millage is less than what we thought.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the estimate of needs as prepared by Putnam and Company, PLLC, for 2015-16.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero Ns.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Agenda item 11H, recommendation, consideration, and action upon appointment of Dr. Mike Simpson or his designated to serve as representative for the review committee of the TIF district.
This is something that, we received the official notification from our county commissioner, Mike Pearson, on this last week, and we got able to get this into the agenda. If you remember, we did this the last time when we had the TIF district, and it, talking with our attorney, felt it was best interest of everyone that the board have a motion with minutes that authorizes me or another staff member, which in this case, I'm recommending that you need to attend these meetings. But I always put in there the designated so that if, in the event that I'm on my deathbed or something like that, Dennis or somebody else could go in my absence and still have the same authority, I will, you have my, know that I will represent the interests of the district, and I will represent the interests that you guys present to me. But generally, the meetings are in the morning, and they vary it when they are as well.
Can we have a discussion before we make motions?
Sure. It's about this agenda, I'm sure can.
It's about this agenda item, so it'll come back. We have, the county recently just passed a tax specifically for this. The county, the citizens of Logan County voted for a sales tax for the county commissioners to build roads. We're looking at a budget that's starting us off a million dollars, estimated up to a million dollars in the hole from last year, where we had to lose teachers and increase classrooms. And I would urge the board to seriously consider sending a representative, Mike, with the mission of saying, "We're opposed to this TIF." We supported the first one, and I'm a wholehearted supporter of TIF when they fall into a need that we have. But they want to take our ad valorem money for the next five years and spend three quarters of a million dollars to build new roads and intersections where there are already going to be, in my opinion, construction occurring, because there's a number of houses down there slated to be built. And in one specific location, 80 are already plotted or platted to be constructed. And under some of the statute that we're using, the TIF is designed to encourage or create construction or advancement of improvement of an area that wouldn't be improved or constructed or advanced if not for the TIF. It's, they call it a "but not for," "but for clause." And I urge the board to really take a look at this, even if you have to table it, or point Mike on there, and before he goes, but I ask you to look before this district gives up money that it's entitled to and needs to pay these guys, and to give them the raise and stuff they deserve, to build a road for five years when the county sold the hospital, and to build roads with that money. You guys remember that, right? That's what they told us. Went to the people and asked for a tax to build roads with, or at least that's what they told us. And now they want us to give up ad valorem money to put, you know, one more kid in the classroom. But for, if they're already plotted and already going to be built down there, these very nice homes, then it's not legitimately a TIF area under the state statute. But for, wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the TIF. Am I correct, Mike? If those houses are already planned, if there's already, construction people have already bought the property, and they're going, "I don't want this board and this district to subsidize a bunch of brand-new quarter million dollar homes in southern Logan County." And I'd say we encourage the vote no on this all the way from the start to the finish. And that's just my, thank you.
One thing I will add, ultimately, it's the decision of the county commissioners, but this committee is, is put together to advise them of the different entities and what their interests are. And so that's the purpose of the committee. And so, but the ultimate decision will rest with the county commissioners.
In the, in the committee's made up of what's called stakeholders.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, who else is on the committee?
The stakeholders are everybody that has a stake down there, the fire district, or either EMS district, the health department.
Meridian Technology.
Meridian Technology. But they want, and when I talked, I talked to the county commissioner today, and this is, to paraphrase what he told me, "Well, I put a lot of bells and whistles in there, you know, we could get by with a lot less than what we, what I gave you, but, you know, I'm asking for three quarters of a million dollars to two miles of road." I said, "How much will it cost? You know, what are we going to take out? That's kind of, you know, what, do we take this out, we take that out?" And I said, "Have a good day."
Yeah, I want to second what Terry said, and Terry, it was very well said, very accurate, and I agree 100%. First off, first off, I have absolute confidence Mike will represent the district in our best interest, but I am opposed to the county commissioners taking new ad valorem growth in funding construction of roads. The county passed a two cent sales ta, or a quarter cent sales tax for roads two years ago. Quarter cent sales tax for the county is roughly a million dollars a year. As far as I'm concerned, commissioners can use that money to pay for roads, and in a time of unprecedented education cuts in the state, the last thing they should be doing is taking ad valorem growth and paying for county roads. Now I know, we, you know, I fully support appointing Mike as our representative, because I know he'll make the right recommendation, but I think as a board, it's appropriate for us to voice our opinions, and I hope, and I'd welcome the rest of you guys, you know, to add to it, or, but that's my personal feelings. I had not visited with Terry in advance in the meeting, and what he said tonight is 100% accurate, and I agree with him.
I'd ask you to at least call the county commissioner and talk to this guy. I'd ask you to read the state statute on this TIF district. The "but for" clause, in my opinion, disqualifies this area because it's already going to be constructed. These developers have already bought the property. That area down there is going to grow, but remember what we said when we went to these people to vote, ask for a bond issue? This growth's going to help offset some of our bond. We knew that new growth was coming down there around that school. Well, those prices of that land just went skyrocketed down there. The prices of those homes are going to be, there is, there is projected by some today to be 2,000 homes south of Seward Road in Logan County in the next year to two years. I haven't verified those figures, I got those figures from county commissioners today, but there are like 200, 300 already scheduled to be built right in that area. We can't afford with a million dollar short budget to give our money away to someone who sold the hospital, someone who cut a tax pass, and we have to rely on what we get from the state. I encourage you to send Mike, but send him with a mission. Respectfully, I ask you guys to look at that, we can't afford it. This district can't afford it.
So just a reminder to the board members, this is regarding the action to appoint Dr. Mike Simpson as the board's designated to serve as a representative on the review committee, not the actual TIF. Discussion will spin.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve Mike as the district's representative for the review committee.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero Ns.
Agenda item number 12, the proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA request, resignation or separation from employment, and transfer of position requests, all as set out in personnel reports and discussion of extra duty assignments as listed in 2016-2017, disclosure of which would, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state and or federal law pursuant to 25 Oklahoma states, section 307b, 1 and 7.
I make a motion, we go into executive session?
Second. Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero Ns.
Items in agenda number 12 were discussed in executive session, and no votes were taken. This will constitute the executive session minutes. Agenda item 12B, did we do that earlier?
No.
Go to 13. Agenda item 13, vote on action set out in personnel reports.
I make a motion that we approve the personnel reports on page 129 of our iPads.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero Ns.
Agenda item 14, action upon recommending of extra duty assignments as listed for 2016-2017.
Make a motion we approve the extra duty assignments as listed 2016-17, 130, 131.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Six I, zero Ns.
Agenda item number 15, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion of possible action on new business, not known about it, could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda pushing.
We have none.
It's agenda item 17. I make a motion. Roll call please.
Pennington.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.